I'd like to call to order a public hearing on University Estates High Point Village Phase Two, and at this point I will turn it over to Debbie Phillips. Debbie?
I had no idea we were going to do that.
You can't trust me.
This is a public hearing, so it's an opportunity for people to talk to us about this project. Lance, do you want to give a quick overview of what's happening in this, and then if any members of the public want to tell us what they think about it, this is a great opportunity to do that.
We can have 15 minutes.
Hi, my name is Lance Rapp. I'm with University Estates. The project for the public hearing is High Point Village Two, the Villas. It's a continuation of the project we have going on now with the ranch-style condominiums. We have it developed up to the clubhouse. This will be the portion that goes -- finishes the rest of. There'll be 12 more buildings, or nine more buildings going out. And then it will actually be a cul-de-sac ending right now, and eventually when we build Stone Ridge, it will connect to University Estates Boulevard. The buildings themselves will be continuous of what we have now. I've gone through the Shade Tree Commission and the Disabilities and Planning Commission, and I guess if anybody has any questions, they can.
Nine buildings. Is it okay to ask a question at this?
Sure.
Okay. Nine buildings and how many units?
Four buildings per.
Four units per building?
Four units per building, same as the one we're building now.
Okay, and if I remember, you are putting sidewalks in, right?
Right, this section will have sidewalks.
Okay, and you're going to connect, when does it get connected to University Boulevard?
Whenever we develop Lot 11, which is down on.
Oh, on the bottom.
First one on the left as you go in.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments on this development?
Comments?
Questions, comments, opinions?
Public hearing time.
It's a public hearing. It's your opportunity to speak.
Well, you go forward. State your name and address, please.
My name is Greg Broadhurst. I live at 14 Granville Avenue, and I have some questions about the development that's requesting a final approval of the plat, as I understand. Is that right?
The plan.
The plan? Yeah. And again, is this project and projects previously coming up to snuff with requirements of the Athens City Code and what's required for acceptance? That's a question I have. In other words, it's durability, it's quality of construction, the issues of access and, you know, coming and going on the street. And just a couple of questions I have, and I don't have more, I don't have a good overview, so I really can't make any comments about those things. But those particular things, especially in light of past issues with this development, I want to make sure, I'd like for council to consider that the basics are in place before anything else is, you know, approved.
Can you define basics for us?
Basics?
Yes.
The requirements of, which are normally required of any development in terms of streets, sidewalks.
And so you're asking, is there a bond? And do we have sidewalks on the plat?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all. I mean, somebody can answer those questions for me, too, if they would like.
I wish Ray Hazel were here. I think if there isn't a bond, I think we will be collecting it shortly.
Okay. As I said, I don't have all the information.
The sidewalks are. I mean, I think we learned from last time. I was hoping, so.
Okay. Greg.
Lance?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Lance, you're welcome. If you'd like to address some of the questions I had, I don't mind.
Do I need to be black?
Yes, definitely. Or you can sit down there.
We'll sit here with the microphone either way, just so they can hear.
And we're not going to debate them, though, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. The public hearing is on High Point Villages Two.
Oh, that's right.
And all that is in place. The bond's already posted. And some of the things Greg's talking about is about the plat and stuff, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
More information.
Inquiring minds want to know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Just a comment. The only reason Ray isn't here is his grandson is in town, and he needed to be with him. And I told him it was fine that he didn't come tonight.
So then you're prepared to answer everything?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
No, I'm not.
Oh, well.
Ray needed to be where Ray is tonight.
Okay. Since neither of us have grandchildren, we'll defer to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, issues on High Point? Well, then, I believe Debbie's going to be passing out a, no, not on this one? Yes, an attendance sheet? Okay, we'll have an attendance sheet. Please sign up.
For the seven o'clock.
For the seven o'clock meeting. Okay, so as of then, with no additional comments or questions or issues or opinions, this public hearing on University Estates High Point Village Phase Two is concluded. Thank you. Move over there. Move over there. Hello. We're back again for a meeting, a public hearing on the zoning of Door Lane Annexation Area as R1 and Open Space. And you may recall about a year ago, the appellant came to us and requested that we annex an area of the hillside above what used to be the Golden Inn. And so we did, and went through the process, and the owner of the land paid the cost of the infrastructure that was required. And then the Planning Commission took the recommendation of the owner that the lot of record for residential use be separated from the remaining part. And so they recommended rezoning, or rezoning of a new annexation area that includes an R1 lot, that includes the house, luckily, and then the open space zones surrounding it. And that's what we're having the hearing on this evening. This is almost the last step in the annexation process, or it is the last step in our part of it. And I would call in Debbie Phillips, but she made me do this talk, so there we are. Okay, any questions or comments on this particular one? It's going to be very short. No? None? Any questions, issues? Have seen the map? Okay. Well, hearing none, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Scott. Good evening. We're gathered for our third public hearing. This time, we are talking about the east end of town, specifically zoning Holzer Clinic area, an area we talked about about the same time as the Door Lane Annexation, as an M-zone and Open Space. And that's basically the proposal that came to us from council, or from the Planning Commission. And we are, again, completing this one as well, this annexation as well, at this point. All right, any comments or questions on the Holzer Clinic Annexation designation as M1 and Open Space? From council? Sierra, would you like to get up and talk, or not?
I can.
Sierra, Debbie's grateful that I made her time.
Hi, again, I'm Sierra Meek, and I represent Holzer from Michael Nolan's office. And we are here for the public hearing on the zoning for the Holzer Clinic on East State Street. And as Councilmember Bain had said, what we're looking at is open space where the 100-year flood zone is in that area. There's currently a lowmar in that area. And then the rest of it is manufacturing, which is what the space already was that was inside the city. So we're just extending that out a little bit. If anybody has any questions?
Could you remind us of the acreages involved?
Sure. The entire, let's see if I can pull out a map here. We're looking at about, and that's an old map. See, if I get up here to talk, I should be a little bit more prepared, shouldn't I?
Well, who'd have thought we'd make it in?
According to the 120, '07, it says 45.6 acres total.
That's correct.
Okay.
23.
And any idea of the mix between the Open Space and manufacturing?
I don't know. I think the space for the manufacturing is much smaller. I think it's like a 10-acre parcel and a, I don't have the map with me. They're pretty, the manufacturing area are pretty smart parcels. Part of that was, like I said before, was already in the city. So part of that parcel, since it was already in the city, is.
Okay, I think.
Yeah, they were small.
I couldn't put my hands on them either, so.
I think it was like a 10 and an 8 or something like that that was manufacturing. All the rest is open space. So as you go further down East State Street, you'll see that's open space past where the building is. Almost very shortly after the building, it starts into open space. And you'll see lots of open space there, and all open space behind towards the river.
Are there any plans, I know it's open space, so you can't really do much there, but are there any plans to do anything with it in terms of, I know it's riverbed and floodway and everything, so you really can't do much?
There's no point, no plans at this point. Like I said earlier, it's under a lowmar, and so for there to be, once a clo-mar, a closing letter of map provision, was available, once that was passed, then it's possible, if they wanted to build something, that they could come back here to the council and ask for some type of planning in that area. But that's long down the road, and there's no plans for that at this point.
Okay.
The close, we got, and I don't know if it's definitive, but a total of 64.196 acres, and then the open space, about 45.6, so that comes close to what you said. Very close if I add them together.
Okay, so total is?
Sierra, I think it's close.
Right.
64. I mean, so it's about 20, roughly 20 and 40, roughly. 45, I should say. Okay, any more questions? All right. So we've talked about this a bit. The only thing that concerned me a little, and the people who were asking are very flexible. We had thought it was going as a B3, but it didn't seem to be a problem for you?
It's not a problem for us, and like I said, later on, if there's a clo-mar and something needs to be changed, we'll come back to you guys, to council members anyway, and then we can rediscuss B3M and go from there. But at this point, it's not a problem for us.
Okay. The only thing with an M is, not that we're expecting anything to be manufactured on that site, but there is no residential development with the M District and the zoning code, so.
Right.
That was the thing that concerned me. Not that it would be there.
And as far, to my knowledge, we don't have any plans of putting any residential units there.
Good. Anybody with a question for Sierra? No? Anybody from the audience? Great, go up to the table. It's going to dislodge her. I tried.
Actually, I'm just making comment, because my question was, and that's why I was looking at Councilwoman, Councilwoman's map, I wanted to know why we were bringing in this into the city as a B, I mean, as an M-zone rather than a B3. That's all. And so you already answered my question.
But I did have a concern about that, in terms of how it sets up with our direction with
the comprehensive plan, in terms of all the other contiguous properties as well.
There's a certain level of uniformity. Except immediately next door, I think, is a B3, isn't it? Yes, so go figure.
Okay.
Depends which one you compare it to.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commission, what can I say? On that political note, any other questions or comments? That's right, they don't adhere to our, well, I'm going to start. I'm going to quit right now. All right, then I'm going to declare this public hearing adjourned, and we will be reading it. This ordinance, rezoning, in a few moments, 7:30, 10 minutes from here. Hold your breath. This is a regular November, first November meeting of Athens City Council, Monday, November 5th, at 7:30. And first thing we do is establish a quorum. I am currently acting as the president of council, although I will still vote, because the mayor is out of town. Bill Bias is the acting mayor. The first item of business is disposition of minutes. Regular session of council, October 1, 2007, and October 15, 2007. Do I have a motion to accept these?
I move to accept the minutes of October 1st and October 15, 2007.
Okay, and it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The minutes are disposed, 6-0, approved, 6-0. Communications. Yes, sir?
I move to accept financial reports of September.
Okay, did somebody second it? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got to get the unison down. Those opposed? The reports are approved. The next item on our agenda is Mary Ann McClure, fresher, giving a report under communications. I guess I could have done it under floor, but deal with me, please, or go with the floor.
I have the third quarter investment income report, which is being passed around to you, which also have the year-to-date totals, which, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see that our earnings so far this year are $395,397.61, with projections at 515,301. That's $515,000. And I don't think we're going to quite hit that, because some of the rates are dropping a little bit, which I think I indicated before. I think we'll come in, we should come in close to, say, $460,000, maybe $470,000. So we'll be about $30,000 or $40,000 short of what the projections are. And the CD rates are dropping along with the Fed rate cuts, too, so I'll have the 5.1 or 5.14% up until next year, the 12 months. They aren't giving any better rates for the longer-term CDs anymore either, so. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the fresher? Hearing none. Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay. Any other communications?
I'd like to announce that the city's having a hazardous waste drop-off, pickup, next Saturday at the community center. Okay, and it's between 10 and 2.
Is there any list somewhere that the people could consult to find out if?
There is a list that should be on the city website.
On the city website? Okay, so folks, look on the website to see what you could bring. Do they have to pay?
As it stands now, tires will cost you, but everything else, it's for city residents, and everything else is pretty much, you don't get charged.
Community center, we're collecting probably oil-based paint?
Yes.
Maybe I better not. Let's say I have the list.
It says oil-based paint, I believe, yes, as well as it says latex paint, too, is acceptable. Batteries, cell phones, e-waste is going to be collected, too. What is unacceptable is ammunition, regular trash, smoke protectors, asbestos, prescription medicine, radioactive materials, appliances, and yardage.
Your opportunity to protect our wellhead area and senior garage. Okay, Kathy?
Oh, I just wanted to let council know that I did contact the consultant we've been discussing about the sewer fund, and I sent him today some information and spreadsheets, and so he's going to, we had a nice discussion on the phone, and he's going to let me know if he thinks he can help us or not. So I'll keep you posted.
And an appropriate type of question might be how much you would charge?
Yes.
If there's enough money, because I may not have.
That will be my first question, if he says, "I can help you."
Okay.
How much will it cost me?
All right. Any other elected officials? Mr. Hunter?
Nothing for open session.
Okay. Acting mayor bias.
No report.
All right. I guess we've heard from everyone we can hear. Ordinance is for third reading, 0111, or 011707, an ordinance accepting the petition for the annexation of approximately 29.94 acres on, of an approximately 29.94-acre tract on Door Lane. Councilmember Phillips?
I move adoption of 11707.
Second.
This is the final stage in annexation of this property that we discussed in the public hearing. It's the one that has a small R1 area and a larger open space area over on Door Lane.
Okay. Other comments from council on 0117, or 11707? None? Audience? Hearing none. All those in favor of 11707, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted, 6-0. 011807, an ordinance designating the zones for annexation of the area on Door Lane. And it follows from the previous one. Any discussion?
I move adoption of 11807.
Good.
This is just the zoning designation for the area that we just annexed in the previous ordinance, which we, there is a map attached to the ordinance, and we just had a public hearing about this zoning designation.
Any other questions or comments from council members?
This is five acres, 0.3 acres are going to be R1, 24.6 is going to be open space. It's mostly hillside.
Definitely, yeah. Any other questions or comments on 118? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. The 118 is adopted, 6-0. 11907, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 42, 45.612 acres filed by Athens Holzer Clinic located on East State Street. Councilmember Phillips?
I move adoption of 11907.
Second.
This ordinance accepts the annexation of the land out on East State Street where Holzer Clinic is under construction. As you know, as the annexation process was moving along, there was a discussion of a possible development agreement, but because we were so close to this final stage, and just to minimize any confusion, we decided to roll some of those issues from the development agreement into the ordinance. So those specifics about the provision of city services are in the language of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Audience? Hearing none. All those in favor of 11907, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The 11907 is adopted, 6-0. 12007, an ordinance designating the zones for annexation, for the annexation area proposed for the Holzer Clinic along East State Street. Councilmember Phillips?
I move adoption of 12007.
Second.
This ordinance establishes the zones for the area that we just annexed. There was some discussion in the hearing about why this was coming in as an M rather than a B3. That was the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I believe that part of the land that was already within the city limits was zoned M, and so it's just being brought in under the same zoning designation. If the Planning Commission decides to try to make that area of East State Street more consistent and move toward a B zoning, this could be reconsidered at a later date, but just to be consistent with the other part of that parcel, it's coming in as an M with the remainder as open space.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of 0120? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ordinance passes, 6-0. 012107, an ordinance accepting the donation of a 1981 Porsche 911SC for use as the dare vehicle in the police department, and expressing the appreciation of the city of Athens, Ohio. Councilmembers, the answer.
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 12107.
Second.
This ordinance is probably the only one we'll talk about tonight that is giving the city something. But David Malawista is offering a 1981-model Porsche to be used in the dare program. We have, in previous ordinances, approved to continue to use the dare program in our local schools, and this is something that Mr. Malawista thought would be appropriate, would be exciting addition to the officer's kit going to the different schools. This is valued, was appraised by a local dealer at approximately $25,000, and the ordinance does provide for an expression of appreciation to Mr. Malawista for this contribution.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on 12107? Hearing none? All those in favor of 12107, say aye.
Aye.
We're never going to make the course. All right, the ordinance passes, 6-0. 012207, an ordinance, amending ordinance 13405 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code and declaring an emergency. A while ago, we talked about this particular ordinance, and we are raising the rates at both the base rate and the other rate, 6%. Right now, the sewer rate exceeds the water rate, and we will be, unless the water rate is raised, it'll exceed it by even more with this amendment. As you know, we have a considerable amount of debt in the fund, and I've been still trying to remember what it was for, what each of those borrowings was for, but in short, we do owe a considerable amount of money. $700,000 each year to OWDA, roughly, and then some, according to auditor Hex's figures, and then we also have notes in Hockingbilly Bank, so we have quite a bit of money to pay. Yes, Mr. Wild?
Did you move to adopt?
No, I did not. Thank you for reminding me. I would like to move to adopt 12207.
Second.
Any other questions or comments on this? Always nice to be humble. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of 12207, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. 01, now we're going to second reading. An ordinance approving the final site plan of the University Estates High Point Village Planned Unit Development Phase Two and granting a variance introduced by Councilmember Phillips. We generally aren't going to be speaking, but I know at least one of these we're going to get. We have some suspensions to do, so. 012407, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a dump truck for the water department. And 012507, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance.
The auditor, this is the ordinance I was asking about. Do we think that it leaves, is quite a list of appropriating some of its?
Yeah, we probably do.
Some of it is for what looks to be like payroll issues, I wasn't sure what's more of it.
Exactly, that's why we do. We have a large payroll coming out this week, Halloween, overtime, so it would be good to go ahead and suspend so we can post this.
Madam President, at this time, I would like to move that we consider ordinance 12507 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
We talked about this ordinance in detail last week, actually, two weeks ago. It's quite an omnibus ordinance that moves around a good deal of money in various funds, general fund, water maintenance fund, water plant fund, sewer maintenance, sewer plant, and many of these movements, some of these movements have to do with overtime that has been accrued and some actual payroll time. So because, as the auditor says, we have a payroll coming up, we do need to suspend to make these funds available.
Okay, any other comments on suspension of the rules, 12507? Hearing none. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0, the rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 12507.
Do we have a second? Thank you.
For the reasons that we just talked about.
Yeah, I would like to note that we are moving around sewer fund monies in excess of close to $100,000. It's a lot of money for. It's a lot of money for overtime in several areas, which is of concern, and I've been trying to figure out, it's almost as big a labyrinth as the debt schedule, but we have to do it. I mean, we're doing it because we were requested, I hope, there.
Some of this has to do also with increases in electric bills and, you know, the sewer and water plants consume a lot of electricity, fuel for vehicles, all these increases that we as public citizens know we're all dealing with.
And I believe, and I have heard, that Murray cautioned the various administrators to keep as tight a rein as they possibly could on these, but it's just the amount of money is startling, at least to me.
Well, as I understand this summer, there were people out on disability, and so then when you have to call people in, you have overtime issues, and the safety has been an issue for the city since I started, and they spend, when they have to have a training, the people who work the night shift have to come in during the day, and that's increased, you know, their overtime issues.
There are lots of decisions that are made that do cost money, and so I guess there we are. Bojinko?
Yeah, I just wondered if we knew what, you know, roughly how this breaks out in terms of overtime.
There it is.
Oh, oh, wait. No, this is to the funds. I meant, you know, I have the numbers in front of me, like 40,000 into the water plant fund, but I meant breaks down in terms of overtime versus, is it all only overtime and services? There's no equipment or anything in here?
No, yeah.
Correct. That's correct. It's all?
It's overtime and, I mean, we do have it. We were given this by the, in the car. It's overtime and it's fuel and utility bills.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Now, we have moved to suspend the rules.
I move adoption.
We've moved adoption and passed it. Now we're on adoption. Are there any other comments on the substance of one twenty-five oh seven? Hearing none. All those in favor of one twenty-five oh seven say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One twenty-five oh seven passes, six, zero. One twenty-six oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31, 2007. One twenty-seven oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the state of Ohio through the Director of Transportation for the safety project to improve geometrics and widen existing roadways, including Richland Avenue Bridge at the intersection of State Route 682 and Richland Avenue in the city of Athens. Okay. One twenty-nine oh seven, an ordinance authorizing and approving the auditor's previous payment renewal of the note authorized by ordinance oh, or eighty oh six to meet the city obligation in the sewer fund. Okay.
Well, you don't have to.
Okay. One thirty-one oh seven, an ordinance closing a portion of West Washington Street between Court and Congress from noon on Thursday, November 29th to 8:00 AM Friday, November 30th for the arts market and declaring, for the art market and declaring an emergency. Okay, now we're at ordinances for first reading. Thirty-two, one thirty-two oh seven, an ordinance amending the city code Title V Water and Sewer Regulations. I can guarantee that this will be amended next time, but we were seeking the information concerning the stormwater costs, and we have a variety of opinions and not enough facts on where this exists in the code. And so this will be sorted out by two weeks from tonight, I think, and we will amend it. But anyway, so as we talked about last time in committee, on the first of January, those people who wish to tap into our system are going to have to pay $1,500 per equivalent EPA residential unit, and that would mean that if you had a very large development, you would pay quite a bit more than just a single residential unit. Currently, the price is about, is 1,000, so we've raised it one and a half times the amount. And then we also include labor and costs, and they'll be charged for installation of new sewer taps. Outside the corporate limits, we're talking about 50,000, a 50% increase over and above the 1,500. And then Section Two, as you can see, multi-family dwellings shall have each dwelling unit charged a separate sewer tap fee unless restricted to one or the other. Both water and sewer permits shall be purchased simultaneously. So we have some changes there. And one thirty-two oh seven will probably be up for discussion next time. Any questions from other members of council? One thirty-three oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Criminal Justice Department for a law enforcement, justice administration grant and declaring an emergency. And that, does that need to be sus, it does need to be suspended? Okay. At this time, I would like to move to suspend the rules on one thirty-three oh seven. The reason for the suspension is the date is, due date is the 16th of November, so we are under some time constraint here, which is the typical reason for suspending the rules. There are other comments on suspension of the rules in this grant? Hearing none. All those in favor of suspending the rule on one thirty-three oh seven say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended. I move adoption of one thirty-three oh seven.
Second.
One thirty-three oh seven will allow the mayor to submit an application to the Ohio Criminal Justice Department to increase and enhance our ability to, to video, to document, to hopefully even clean up the garage, the parking garage with the new enhanced scrutiny that will come with this grant. I believe Captain Pyle described it in a memo that we all read before, so I don't know that I have to say much more than that. Any other people wishing to speak?
I just want to clarify that this is basically for surveillance. There's no cleanup in here.
Oh, yes. Surveillance, yes.
Surveillance in the hopes that it will lead to less.
Yes. This will not be a.
Yeah, right.
Power washer. Sorry.
That's right.
The power washer, council member. Okay.
Just want to clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Others? Okay. So all those in favor of one thirty-three oh seven say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We, the, we have passed one thirty-three oh seven. One thirty-four oh seven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and seven appropriation ordinance. Councilmember stands.
Madam President, this is another appropriation ordinance that has several sections, several activities within Section One, I'm sorry. The first is a movement of $2,246 into the CDBG funds. This would allow us to, this would appropriate some money to complete the work that the city is having done on our property at 30, 25.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five Central Avenue. It's going to include weatherization, which, insulation, new windows, new roof, et cetera. And I'm going to have to ask the auditor's help for the other two movements. Thirty thousand, nine hundred, ten dollars to general fund.
These are auditor fees for the county auditor. Three different account lines. We really just didn't budget enough. We were pretty close on two of them. There's the auditor and treasurer fees, delinquent tax fees. We budgeted 1,400. The bill was 1,500. And the Board of Election, well, and then the auditor and treasurer fees actually were about 42,000 this year. They were about 40,000 last year. For some reason, we only budgeted about 24,000 this year, so we just didn't budget appropriately. And then the Board of Election fees jumped up, but those are more variable, I think, from year to year, depending on election costs. So I have our bill from the auditor and the paperwork from the Board of Elections to show what our expenses were, but basically the auditor just withholds these fees when they send us our property taxes. And so we've basically already paid them, but we need to appropriate this money in those accounts.
Can you explain to us what do we pay the county auditor and treasurer for?
It's like a processing fee, a percentage.
Because?
Because they collect the property taxes and do the paperwork and then send us a check, and so all the different things that they do, estate taxes, special assessments, mowing, anything that they collect money on, they keep a fee, a processing fee. And same with the Board of Election fees, delinquent tax, and delinquent tax advertising is what it is, and so we pay our percentage.
I'm having trouble understanding what the Board of Elections gets a fee for from us.
Well, for all those people like us who run for election in the city. Because the county, it's the county Board of Elections, and they charge the city fees for us.
Is this new?
No.
No.
I don't remember.
What, my filing fee back?
Yes, let's pass it. And when we pay it, let's take all of our filing fees out of it.
So these are, these are, as I wanted the auditor to explain it to us because it just points out that nothing is free.
Oh, my goodness.
And $6,500 again to the general fund, and this one, I'm sorry, auditor.
Digital meters for parking.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Digital secretary.
She did tell me earlier. We did talk about this. This was mentioned in committee that the parking enforcement staff would like to complete the installation, complete the replacement of all manual parking meters in the city with the digital ones that are already throughout most of the city, and this is just buying the meter heads. $6,500 is going to buy just quite a few, hundreds and some?
I think it's just 50.
Or 50. It's still quite a few.
A lot of meters.
But this would bring almost all the meters into, into the same collection.
Okay. You don't need to suspend any. Other comments? Questions? One thirty-four on one thirty-five. Audience, stand. Okay. One thirty-five oh seven, an ordinance approving the final plat of the University Estates Residential Single Family Lots Phase Two and granting variances. Councilmember Phillips?
This ordinance begins the process of us approving the final plat of University Estates. This was recommended to us by the Planning Commission. The plat document has been sitting in council office for more than its required 14 days now, so we're able to begin first reading. So it's been a little while ago that we discussed this in committee. We had to wait for that period of time to pass before we could begin the readings. The, when we talked about it in committee, one of the questions was about the road because the plat has on it the new armitage road, and we wanted some testing done on that. We do have a letter about that, but this is not the same thing as dedication of that road, so we actually, I believe, wanted like a core sample just because there were problems with one of the contractors out there, so we want that assurance that the road is good, you know, all the way through. We will be able to look at that before the road is dedicated, so accepting the plat is not the same thing as dedicating the road. There are two variances in here. One is the length of the cul-de-sac at Walnut Court, and the other is allowing several of the lots to exceed the three to one depth to width ratio. Lance, I don't know if you have anything more you want to say about this to us?
No, not really.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
And Debbie, you're going to have some written material that talks about pump stations, the road pump stations?
Right. That was, another question that came up in committee is because of the hills out on this project and the fact that pump stations can be expensive to maintain, there's been some discussion about whether we can minimize the use of pump stations. My understanding is that University Estates and the administration have been discussing this, and it would be possible to look at a surcharge for maintenance of the pump stations, and we're going to get some of that in writing before we're done with this process of reading this ordinance.
Especially given the fact that we're going to have changes at all levels. This is extremely important that we see this.
Yeah.
Because of costs of electricity we were just talking about. Paul?
Public hearing needed for this?
No, that was for the. High Point Village.
High Point.
You don't need a public hearing for this.
Anybody else? Any other comments or questions on this? One thirty-five oh seven? Okay, we'll have the next reading in two weeks. One thirty-six oh seven, an ordinance suspending Athens City Code Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location during the period from 23 November 2007 until 1 January 2008 and declaring an emergency. Councilmember White?
Couple of things on this. One is, as this states, it's suspending the 24-hour parking rule for when school's out. I am tempted to suspend rules on this. I'm not sure if everybody's, there are going to be enough people here for the next regular council session, so I move to suspend rules for one thirty-six oh seven.
Okay. So now it's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules on one thirty-six oh seven. Let's have comments on suspension only, please.
Okay. If we're looking down the road here, if we do three readings on this, we could get away with the second reading, which I think is the 19th, but I'm not sure how many people will be in town to actually be able to suspend rules on the second reading. On the third reading, of course, we'll already be into the proposed time then we're suspending this particular 24-hour law.
Okay. Other comments on suspension of the rules? Hearing none?
You don't ever look down here.
Okay.
I was over at the parking enforcement today doing other business, but they mentioned, they asked if we were going to be doing this again, and if we were, to let them know as soon as possible, so suspension seems like the best thing to do.
Councilmember? Somebody's.
In my comment was just that I'd like to, as much notification for the public as possible, so if we're going to be doing this, more, more time to make people aware of this.
So, okay, so we're suspending early, and we can ask Scott to put it on the government access channel. No, let's have, okay, so let's not, all those in favor of suspending the rules then on one thirty-six oh seven, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. The rules are suspended on one thirty-six oh seven.
I move adoption of one thirty-six oh seven.
Second.
Okay, this is, we did this last year. We suspended the requirement for 24-hour parking. This means you don't have to move your car every evening. It's going to go from November 23rd until midnight Tuesday, January 1st of 2008. The intention of this is that this is a slack time for, students are out, a lot of people leave the city, some with their cars, some without, and this will enable some people who don't have off-street parking to be able to park in front of their house. That's the intention. You could look at this in one sense as just another part of our holiday festive activities.
Well, that's stretching. My, we're going to put little lights on the cars.
They're lighting 24 hours. Get decorated.
But, you know, just one question that I have, Paul, is I understand why you're doing it, but as I drive along Elliott Street and some of the others where people will leave their cars, there are piles of leaves under cars, and I just wonder how we will get those out before the snow and before, because those streets are so heavily used, and maybe we could just have, the street will be swept tomorrow kind of thing, but I just think it's, so it doesn't get done, so the leaves end up in the storm sewer. I know it's a, it's a great thing for the people, but I hope it's okay for the storm sewer.
Okay. I, they came through my neighborhood, at least the vacuum truck sometime last week. I know there's still a lot of leaves to fall down. We're talking right now, at least another 16 more days, two weeks, past two weeks. I suspect most of the leaves will be down by then. I'm not sure what their schedule is. Yes.
I mean, there is usually, there's often a pile in those high-density neighborhoods of leaves under each car that never get moved, fitted and sticky.
Okay. Well, again, this is part of the concern. I wish, I should have started this early so we had more time to do the readings. I hadn't heard any problem really with the leaves.
No.
I know we have a little later fall, so.
Go in the spring, down the storm. But I, I do think that there is a problem over the long run with having a time where we do clean the we do clean the streets, no matter what. And so, as we proceed on this, I think you need to have a window where everybody moves their vehicle and we have this opportunity.
I have found most of the time, there's a lot of cars off the streets already. I mean, Elliott, as I said, there's a lot of cars there right now and, but, you know, you go down towards Mill Street, winter break and it's almost a ghost town.
Except for the cars that will not be there. Okay, I just, you know, I'm just pointing out that it's not as easy as it seems on the surface.
I will pay attention. I'll drive down there.
Jim?
And I'll just voice my perennial opposition to, if this is a good thing, then I just, I don't think we need to keep changing it all the time. Can we, can we make these part of an amendment to this ordinance so that if we think these are good things, we could just amend the ordinance and say it is in effect, except these times? And maybe include something about street sweeping, et cetera. I'd like to maybe just look at the ordinance again.
Was last year the first year that we did this?
Yes.
So, I think that that was like our trial and then maybe this is our second follow-up. And maybe after seeing that it works or doesn't work this year, then I agree in terms of looking at an amendment for the ordinance.
Done, January.
Done.
All right, all those.
Okay, I'd also look at the fact that how often we sweep the streets. I know we had the vacuum, leave vacuums, but the street sweeping is, in my neighborhoods, twice a year maybe, so, you know, the fact that we're going to do this for, you know, show up here at a time, I don't think it will overlap. The leaves are a concern, though. I can understand that.
Yeah, I think, you know, just in terms of, I think the leaves at the curb that get sucked up are often a phenomenon of the suburban neighborhood, more suburban. And I don't think it happens. Leaves fell off the trees and under the cars without any human agency involved usually, I think. Okay, well, I'll stop. I just want, everything has its costs. Just want to make sure we knew it. Now, all those in favor of 13607, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance, 13607 passes, 6-0.
Madam Chair?
Yes, we are so unanimous.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that council thought there might not be enough to suspend at the next meeting. And I would respectfully request that you revisit 013407, the appropriation ordinance that we just talked about. As I said, when the auditor sends us, the county auditor sends us a check, they've already deducted the fees. So, we've already paid that. And so, I have moved money around in those account lines and I would like to be able to move that money back in there by the end of the month and not wait until December. So, if you would consider suspending tonight.
But I'm, I was, I was just thinking of timing, more or less. Which, should we do it now? Go back?
Well, if you think there's going to be enough to suspend in two weeks, I'm fine with that. But, you know, we just got this check from the auditor last week. It's not like I've. Pardon?
They could have, they could have, if they don't have enough on the next Monday, they could have a meeting on Tuesday. I just think it's kind of a shaky suspension.
Well, I mean, I didn't know. Paul just suspended his ordinance because of that, so.
Well, we'll, I'll promise I'll come on Tuesday to do it then. Second. We've done that before.
Yeah.
We will do it. Okay, 13707, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for a safety grant. Councilmember Sands?
Madam President, this, the title of this ordinance explains, explains the body of it. This is just a grant that would be available through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And there could be a local match involved. This would be a, I'm not sure what a safety intervention grant means. Is this for safety training or safety equipment?
It's been a reduction.
Sorry, could you say that again? I didn't quite hear you.
I said, I believe it's part of the 10-point program because it's reduction in workers' compensation.
Okay.
And I believe there was some discussion about equipment and trying to deal with the repetitive stress potential, you know, actually dealing with the placement of monitors and height of desks and, yeah.
So, the safety intervention is indeed equipment.
Oh, this is, did we discuss this in committee? And now it's appeared in this forum? Okay, okay.
There is no, there is no date mentioned in this, so we don't need to suspend.
Any other comments on the safety grant from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Comp? Okay, 13807, an ordinance establishing a policy to allocate funds for public art in Carol Patterson's absence. Who is speaking? Who's a member of the Recreation Committee?
I am, I can, I can read the ordinance.
We have, well, we have quite a bit of material. I believe Carol's kept us well informed on this, so looking at 13807, if we just look over it for a moment, say, the policy is there, we have our statement of purpose, and then we go through and we have the 1%, allocation for capital improvement projects, including eligible bond projects and so on, so forth, for over a million dollars. And such allocation shall be used to promote the cultural heritage and artistic development of the city by enhancing its character and identity, contribute to economic development, tourism, and increase the opportunities for its citizens to participate in the arts. And we have, then, the second part of this is probably key. It shall be the, the second part of Section 1 is key. It shall be the policy of Athens City to encourage, to encourage, did you hear that word, encourage, a similar allocation for public art by private developers. And so, then we go on and talk about the purpose of the art policy in Section 2. Once again, I believe Carol did a wonderful job of covering this. And then, commercial construction participation in Section 3, eligible projects and set-asides, spells out the difference between the art or potentially giving money. And then exemptions are there in Section 5. And Section 6 talks about the Municipal Arts Commission will confer during the permitting process to recommend the use of funds, advise on acquisition and placement, designate items as public art, improve the allocation, assist in fundraising and grant writing, establish guidelines for fund expenditure, and create an inventory and maintenance of workers for public art. And then finally, the usual ending. I trust we're not giving away powers to the Municipal Art Commission. We all had a chance to discuss, yeah?
I will state publicly, I did state to Carol prior to the committee meeting, I had some reservations about the obligation you appear to be imposing upon a private developer. I will restate that again and try to research it for your second reading. But I do have some concerns about that.
Yeah, I think she might have responded to it by going to encourage from requiring.
She still has in Section 3, the private developer does not wish to have fine arts in conjunction with he or she donating the same amount. So, she's basically saying, if you don't do the fine arts, you've got to donate.
Oh, is that the way?
Which looks like a development.
What shall be encouraged?
Well, it says that elsewhere, but then in Section 3 it says.
It says 3, oh, so it says.
So, should we?
3B said, basically, you, if you don't want to do the art, you make a donation to the city. That looks like an obligation to me.
It'd be, yeah.
So, maybe we need to think about making that.
Paul says may donate.
Is that, that shall? I have reservations.
Okay. Okay, that's good. It gives us all some perspective. The may is a key word there and we have, because I know that there, when we first talked about it, speaking frankly, I think the support was non-existent when it was, when it were pretty non-existent. It was shaky.
Shaky.
Shaky when we were talking about stipulating and requiring. And now that it's all very loose, it's easier.
Now it's loose.
Now it's loose. It's earthquakey.
I was going to say, since we're discussing it, I guess I have a concern because money is so tight in this community and we have so many needs for basic services. I mean, this basically commits the city to allocating 1% of any building project over a million dollars to this donation to art. And I mean, frankly, my concern is that we need so many kind of basic services that, according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we should probably deal with those first. So, personally, I am kind of, I am concerned about, you know, the city spending this kind of money on art at this time.
And, but you notice Section 4, city council may by a majority vote exempt any project from this vote.
Well, yes, but it seems like a lot of extra work and a lot of, you know, purposeful exemptions.
Your point is well taken. I just want to make sure that.
Yes, I understand that.
It was clear to those listening out and in the audience that we can vote to obviate 13807. Debbie?
Just a quick question. In Section 4A, the 100,000 or 200,000 as a cap? I thought we took out the 200,000. So, I don't know if it's a typo, but it's still there? Okay.
So, that, would that be an amendment or is it? Okay. And I, I think in, just in general for reference, we would be talking about something of the nature of the community center in this case, sort of thing. Jim?
Well, then, if we're going to talk about community center, in our discussion two weeks ago, it was mentioned that even though this ordinance was not effective at the time, the community center does include a fair number of artistic additions that were made just because the designer and the client, being the city, thought that they were worthwhile without, without this ordinance. And I guess I meant to express during that earlier discussion that I had the same reservation that Councilmember Bishop has about committing us to do that. We, as the city, will probably go whatever way to include opportunities for artistic expression in anything that we build. But I don't like the idea of legislating it. And if it's just encouragement, I'm not sure why we need ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Paul?
And in terms of exemptions, I have quite a few exemptions here. But let's say if we have to build a fire station, something like that, we have to put art in a fire station, that's how it works, down the road.
I think so.
Unless it's very inexpensive.
Okay. Let's ask.
All right. Oh, my goodness, more to think of. All right, any other comments on 13807? Give Carol credit for keeping us in the loop. It's just a relatively complex question. 13907, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Appalachian Regional Commission for the purchase and installation of energy-efficient traffic signals and declaring an emergency. Mr. Warren?
I move we suspend rules on 13907.
Second.
On, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Comments on suspension?
Okay, this is the grant that the date, closing date of this meeting proposal is Monday, November 5 at 4:00 p.m. So, I hope they put it in at this point.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, that's today.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I guess, any other comments on suspension? That says it all. All those in favor of suspending the rules on 13907, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended, 6-0.
Okay, I move adoption of 13907.
Second.
Okay, this is an ordinance to submit a grant to the Appalachian Regional Commission for purchase and installation of energy-efficient traffic signals. We've done some of this already. This would just be adding more LED light systems to our traffic lights. This would be part of our Cool Cities Resolution, so it would be helpful in that.
Any other, any questions on this?
I don't want to ask. If it's already been put in, why are we passing it?
We have to authorize it.
After the fact? What if we didn't pass it? Never mind. Okay, okay, fine. Thank you.
How much money is involved, Paul?
Find a number on this. I've got lots of paperwork on it, but I did not get a number offhand. Oh, okay, wait a second. ARSC anticipates selecting 57 projects, about 15,000, and there's some matching funds, but I don't have the percentage of matching funds. So, it's not a lot of money, really.
But it's.
Every little bit helps.
Every little bit. Okay, other questions or comments on 13907? We have suspended the rules and now we're getting close to being ready to adopt it. Other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting 13907, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 13907 is adopted. 6-0. All right, now, announcements and other business. Next week, we have committee meetings on Tuesday at 7:00. Is that correct? Because the building will be locked and closed. All right, so I'll start at that end, since I never looked that way.
Because Monday's holiday.
Transportation, please.
Okay, do you have anything for your agenda?
Sidewalks.
Okay.
I'll have things added, of course.
Okay.
But sidewalks.
Jim?
Finance, yes. Be having discussions about that project.
Okay.
Debbie? Planning and Development Committee and the Flood Plane Task Force is ready to report to us. So, I'd like to go first, since we'll have people coming to talk to us. And I think they're planning probably about a 15-minute presentation and questions. So, this is kind of an overview of recommendations to improve our flood plane regulations, to help the city qualify for the community rating system program, which can save everyone money on flood insurance premiums and make our community safer. And the committee has done a huge amount of work. So, hopefully, we'll have several committee members here to be part of that presentation.
Okay, so we have the typical three or four meetings. Remember then, we can also, we can go for the next with the rest of us. But I have a second bit of other business. At this point, Bill Bias was supposed to do this, but we, he's in a different spot. So, I'm going to nominate Amy Flowers to serve on the committee to research the implementation of a medical amnesty program at OEU. This was at the request of Tamika Kramer, who would like to have Amy on that committee. Do I have a second for that motion?
Okay.
Okay. The purpose of the committee that Amy's points is requested to be appointed to. It's a presidential committee that will research the implementation of this program. Student Senate has passed a resolution calling for this committee to investigate where, following similar programs at other universities, it's similar to what's gone on before. It has to do with, Amy, what's medical amnesty?
That's a very good question.
Will you come back and tell us when you're?
I will, as soon as you let me know.
Because I, I guess I don't understand exactly what it is myself.
You're not the only one.
Okay, well, we all have a big learn. Do you know, Mr. Bias?
I've got a master's degree in Health Services Administration. I don't have a clue.
That makes me feel much better. Well, Amy, bring back information, will you please? Okay, all those in favor of appointing Amy to this committee? All right, 6-0, she's on. Okay, any other announcements and other business? Now, we move to the next item and last item before the executive session. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. If there's any person speaking, please step forward, give your name and address. You have three minutes to speak.
Greg Broad here, supporting Grandal in Athens. This evening, I would like to bring to see council and encourage them to begin implementation of, on page 617 of the Athens 2020 Comprehensive Plan, the telec- of, on page 617 of the Athens 2020 Comprehensive Plan, the telecommunications facilities ordinance. In light of my recently becoming aware of the city sighting of a, a tower of sorts in, in my immediate neighborhood without my knowing, but it was an administrative process, I guess that there was a legislation passed a few weeks ago or a number of weeks ago that I wasn't aware of. But I, I think that we need to start looking at not only this particular ordinance, but also other ordinances in, that have been outlined in the, in the implementation, phase two implementation comprehensive plan as soon as possible. I've taken a look at section 1207.15, the telecommunications facilities ordinance, and it's pretty tight. And it meets all of the, of the requirements of the Federal Communications, the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which does give local jurisdictions the opportunity to have oversight oversighting, especially in terms of actual zoning and sites in which it's permitted to be erected. So I'm just here to encourage council to, at the earliest convenience, and I didn't know why I should come to the committee meeting, and perhaps that's the place to start, and encouraging, this is actually under general environmental initiatives for your reference in the, in the comprehensive plan. Begin with this one, because I think, when we look at the, at the objectives of the, and I won't read them, because you'll be able to read them. People can find them, like I said, in the comprehensive plan, phase two implementation under telecommunications facilities. There's a, there's a purpose section here on, well, on this, I think it's on page 619, I believe. Oh, no, it's, excuse me, it's 617 of the, of the phase two implementation that outlines the purpose for the enactment of the telecommunications facility. I guess I will read it really quickly. To provide for orderly development within the city, to protect property values, to maintain the aesthetic appearance of, of the city, including not but limited to its unique residential character, unobstructed open spaces, and attractive commercial and office industrial areas. And another, another one of the items is to protect residential properties, parks, open spaces, and the non-intensive commercial zoning districts, which are characteristic of the city with, from the adverse effects of towers and related facilities, and to promote importantly, co-location of wireless telecommunications facilities in order to decrease the number of towers in the city. So I urge the City Council at its earliest convenience to take this up and enact it into, into, into law. Thank you.
So Bajinka, looks like it could be your committee, sorry. And whenever you meet then, would you schedule that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you give me whatever information?
We'll find, we can get it in the plan. Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to speak at this point?
Okay. All right, now we're on item 10, executive session, pending and threaten litigation. And I would like to ask Amy to move to go into executive session.
So moved.
Who would you like to have included in this meeting on pending?
Well, you know, everybody.
The mayor?
The interim mayor.
The interim mayor, the auditor.
Auditor, yeah, auditor.
And the law director.
She always gets out of the story.
That's it, okay. All those in favor of moving into executive session, note that we will discuss nothing. We will just adjourn after this. Mr. Wile?
Aye.
Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are going into executive session in five minutes, so be ready.